Good evening. My name is Lois Tenler and I am Vice President for Government and Community Relations at MTA New York City Transit. I will serve as the Hearing Officer for tonight's public hearing. This hearing provides the public with the opportunity to comment on MTA New York -- oh, York City's Transit's proposal to restore W service and revise N and Q service in connection with the opening of Phase 1 of the Second Avenue subway. MTA Capital Construction expects to complete Phase 1 of the Second Avenue subway in late 2016. The new line will run under Second Avenue from 96th Street to 72nd Street. South of 72nd Street, the line will curve west, connecting to the existing 63rd Street Line and serving Lexington Avenue 63rd Street Station where a cross-platform transfer to the F will be possible. New York City Transit has undertaken a comprehensive review of service options in connections with the opening of the new line. This effort entailed analysis of projected ridership levels, operational feasibility, and resource availability. As a result of this analysis, New York City is proposing to revise N and Q service on the Broadway and Astoria lines in order to accommodate service on the new Second Avenue line. New York City Transit is also proposing restoration of W service to maintain service levels on the Astoria line. A map of the proposed service plan along with accompanying informational materials that further detail the service plans for each line can be found at the information tables outside this room. To promote this hearing, an advertisement was published in the New York Daily News, El Diario, and multiple other news outlets. Notices of the hearing were posted on the MTA website, www.mta.info, on bilingual signs in local subway stations, and on Brooklyn and Queens bus routes, and mailed to local elected officials and other interested parties. The MTA website describes these proposals, and details of these proposals are available at the information table outside this room, where you may also ask questions or fill out comment forms. Customers are also encouraged to submit written comments via our website or by mail to me at 2 Broadway, 17th Floor, New York, New York, 1004. If you have any written comments you would like to submit this evening, please drop them off at the information table outside this room. This proceeding is not an open question-and-answer session; however, there is expert staff at the tables outside the room to provide information on these proposals. All spoken statements presented tonight, all correspondence, all emails, and common cards received by April 14, 2016 will be incorporated into the official hearing record and reviewed by the MTA Board prior to a vote on the proposals. Before we begin, I'd like to briefly explain the procedures for tonight's public hearing. First, I will call the names of people who register to speak in the order in which they signed up. If you wish to speak tonight, please fill out a registration form at the registration table outside the room. For those who have pre-registered to speak tonight, either via telephone or on our website, we ask that you also sign in at the registration table. I will be calling out your names, one speaker at a time. When I call your name, please come to the podium. When you've been getting your comments, please state your name, and if applicable, any organizational affiliation. So that we may hear from all interested parties tonight, your remarks should not exceed three minutes. If you run out of time, you may submit written comments to supplement your oral testimony. This hearing site is accessible to people who are mobility impaired. Let me introduce the people who are with me up here on the panel. Sitting to my right, your left, is President Verne Keakum. To her right is Whitton Hambusham, our Senior Vice President for Subways. To my left, your right, is Andrew Albert, MTA Board Member. And to his left is Judy McLean, Senior Director for Rail Service Planning at New York City Transit. Okay, let's begin. The time is five after five, and we're going to start off Mr. Shelby Gardner, representing Congresswoman Carolyn Maloney.
Good evening, and I would like to thank you for allowing me to present testimony on behalf of Congresswoman Carolyn Maloney. Almost nine years ago to the day, on April 16, 2007, we broke ground for Phase 1 of the Second Avenue subway. I'm delighted that the project is scheduled to open for revenue service in December 2016. It will bring much-needed relief to riders of the Lexington Avenue line, the nation's most overcrowded subway, and will provide a one-ride, one-seat ride between the Upper East Side and Brooklyn. As ridership continues to rise throughout the subway system, this new line will provide the first real expansion of subway service in roughly 60 years. I'm delighted to have worked with my colleagues in government to secure $1.3 billion in federal funds for the project. I'm also delighted that the MTA is working to move seamlessly towards Phase 2 of the project with $1.5 billion in the state budget. The restoration of $1 billion by Governor Cuomo was a real signal of his commitment to this project, and I am delighted that the MTA is moving forward with the planning and design phase expeditiously. As the Second Avenue subway is beginning to become a reality, the MTA has done a good job of making sure that thought was put into how the new line will operate. I am pleased that the W line will be reappearing in Queens and that the MTA has pledged that Queens will not experience any reduction in service. I am hopeful that the MTA will continue to monitor the situation to make sure that Q service on Second Avenue does not have any adverse impact on my constituents in Queens. For the new Second Avenue subway service to succeed, there needs to be attention paid to ensure that sufficient trains are running so that people adopt the new line. If there's too much headway and too few trains, people will continue to use the Lexington Avenue line. On the other hand, if they run frequently, and I foresee that many people will choose the new, modern, and comfortable Second Avenue subway instead, it will be particularly useful for people who are heading to the West Side and to Brooklyn, and I look forward to riding it. I also strongly believe that the Second Avenue subway will be most successful if the MTA moves quickly to expand it to 125th Street and starts working on Phases 3 and 4. We have many more people moving in our community, and we need more subway service to help them move around. I will do everything I can to secure federal funds for the additional phases of the subway. The MTA has been one of the most dynamic agencies in the nation in building ambitious projects, but there's a lot of more work to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Christopher Greif, please.
I'm Christopher D. Greif, member of New York City Transit Riders Council, and as I'm going to say, is New York City Transit Riders Council is supporting the W train to return on the Phase 1 on the Second Avenue subway and opening up, as I said, the Second Avenue subway that we have waiting many, many years. True core celebration that we do are having, very happy to see this train running. The council is pleased to restore the W service after its limiting of the 2010 budget cuts. The W train was a valid service because it prodded more capital of the Broadway line with ridership going up very high. Propulsive operating between Queens and Lower Manhattan, we believe that New York City Transit should remain opening the possibility extending the W service into Brooklyn during rush hours as the periods of more frequent service between Manhattan and Brooklyn and could provide ridership growth as Brooklyn is continuing increasing the population. We are also pleased to see the restoring of the W service as well along New York City Transit adding express service in Manhattan on the Broadway line, providing of the N Express track south of 42nd Street, which give the ridership an added option to choose the service of their best means their needs. New York City Transit Riders Council understands the W service like restoring events of the opening of the Second Avenue subway, and this time the Q train will be ending a temporary terminal of 57th Street and 7th Avenue. We ask that if sending this to impart of the turning the Q trains in Manhattan on the other lines that shares the tracks with the Q train. New York City Transit should operate does not force riders to be delayed, and we will also ask that New York City Transit participate of any attending of this issue. We thank you very much, and we are supporting this very strongly, and I cannot wait to get on the Q train to go to Second Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker tonight is Mr. X.
As I said before, you shouldn't start public hearings before 6:00 p.m. But as usual, you ignored me. So there's an old saying goes, "Your hard hit will give you a soft behind." Okay? I want to thank you for the toilet tissue. Okay? I don't support this plan. As I said before, the Second Avenue should have four tracks, not two. But if two tracks means local service only, that won't help, that won't relieve the Lexington line. But as usual, you ignore me. So as an old saying goes, "Your hard hit will give you a soft behind." That's why the Second Avenue is. There's no reason why you can't build four tracks. But if you want to stick to building just two tracks, that's fine with me. But if you don't see an improvement, you'll know why. Okay? You need trains, but you don't need a W train. When I give you my testimony, you'll know why. And another thing. As far as I'm concerned, this public hearing was only advertised on your website. I didn't see any local buses or subway trains. I didn't see any posters, any subway train stations. So that means inadequate advertisement. You said it was advertised on the internet? I don't know if it was, but I know one thing, I only saw it on the website. And you can expect this public hearing, because you advertise this public hearing inadequately, you can expect it to end at 7:00 p.m. due to attendance. You start a public hearing before 6:00 p.m., and you expect to get a bigger attendance, a good attendance. No, that's not happening. It didn't happen the last four years. In fact, on November 7, 2012, every public hearing I testified at since that day had bad attendance. The attendance was so bad, you had two to four intermissions because you ran out of speakers. No, you didn't run out of speakers, you lost speakers. They lost faith in you because you didn't do the right thing like Spike Lee. You know what your problem is? You don't know what's going on with Marvin Gaye, and additionally, you don't know which way it's something like Richard Pryor. You think you know everything, but you don't. And over the years, I adopted better proposals than you. It's just too bad I'm not working for you. But if I was working for MTA, the outcome would have been different. So as I said, expect this public hearing to end at 7:00 p.m. Expect it April 20, public hearing to end at 7:00 p.m., which is also going to start at 5:00 p.m. So as an old saying goes, "Your hard hit will give you a soft behind." And by the way, I think it said Tommy P. is absent. He should be here.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Deborah Greif.
Yes, I am related to Mr. Greif. When I'm here, I'm representing two hats. I am a member of the MTA ADA Committee. I'm also the Chairperson of Brooklyn Families Port Services Advisory Council for families with developmental disability, and I represent Brooklyn in Albany on the Commissioners Committee. Yes, my families are thrilled about the Second Avenue subway, and they're very happy about the W coming back, except my families would love to see it come into Brooklyn because, you see, many times we're waiting and waiting for the R train to come. And I know there's different cross tracks, but you see, the R now go -- because when I was a child, the R went up to Astoria and the N, however they did it, it was reversed, and they reversed everything. That's great, but let me tell you, when there's a problem on the Queens line, we wait and wait and wait because I do have to do site visits and other things in Bay Ridge, and I try to times to use the train. But the R doesn't come, and you're waiting and you're waiting. So I would like for it to, you would have during rush hours, which is really needed because you have a lot of high schools. At 36th Street, you know Sunset Park has a new high school with a lot of students that come from different parts of the borough, as well as the Telecommunication High School is at your next stop, 59th. It would be much better if you have during rush hours, morning and afternoon, the W come in. This way, if you're on the 5th, 6th Avenue, or whatever, you can connect to the R or the W, and you can get where you have to. Also, please try to get some of those stations in Brooklyn with elevators, ramps, however you can do it architecturally. You do have a lot of people with disabilities who live on those lines. I'm glad that all the new Second Avenue subway stations will have elevators, escalators. If possible, try to ramp in case we have electrical power, so at least we can, even though it's annoying, you still can get away on ramp. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Steph Sax.
My name is Stefan Sax. I am also an R rider, which in reality means I am an R waiter because I wait on the platforms as a previous speaker has indicated for extended periods of time, often in vain. So I would extend upon her proposal and say that there was, to me, there was even, there was no necessity for a W train, just have, just increase service on the R train and send the R train back to Astoria. This would both alleviate the Long Island City problems and the Bay Ridge problems, which are endemic. And that's my point.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Craig Leder.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Craig Leder. I am a professional urban planner. I am also an Upper East Side resident and a member of Manhattan Community Board 8, the co-chairman of the Second Avenue Subway Task Force. First, and speaking on behalf of our community at large, we're all extremely enthusiastic about the upcoming revenue service for the Second Avenue subway. It's been a long time coming. It's definitely been an experience for all of us to have to work, live through all the construction impacts and the waiting game and the issues that everyone deals with on a regular basis on the Lexington Avenue line, and we're all excited that we're going to have relief to some degree. I come to you this evening to make just a few points. I think, speaking both for myself and having experienced our Transportation Committee last night, we are definitely interested in learning more details about the service plan specific to Second Avenue, and specifically a plan for what the headways are going to be in an official capacity. I know that we can speak with your staff to learn more about that, but we were longing for more information last night when your representative was present and was not able to share with us what the headway levels were going to be throughout various dayparts, weekdays and weekends. And obviously, we are expecting frequent service to support the large demand that obviously exists for a service in our community. And as you know, we've worked very closely with your partners at MTA Capital Construction throughout the process, and we've had a very good relationship, although obviously at times there were always challenges to overcome. And we look forward to working with you as this transitions over to New York City Transit's domain, and we hope that we can continue to have open communications and open dialogue about how it operates, and also inevitably, there are going to be times where there are going to be construction impacts, and to be able to at least talk to us about how those instances are going to be addressed in terms of service and in terms of service detours and disruptions going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jason Anthony Pinero.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jason Anthony Pinero, the author of State of the Track. This YouTube series that I'm doing on YouTube about the track conditions in our subway system. I totally in favor of the return of the W, but those who live like myself along the 4th Avenue line in Brooklyn only have the R train. And waiting for the R train between DeCopp Avenue and Bay Ridge is a hell. Why don't we consider extending the W instead of ending in the Financial District in Lower Manhattan, ending in one of two points during rush hours, obviously, in Bay Parkway in Besse and Hurst or in Kings Highway? And obviously, what will be the headways between 96th Street and Midtown? And I found it strange that in the Q is express in Manhattan. To be more specific, it should say express between 57th Street, 7th Avenue, and Canal So that's everything I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Rudolph Harris.
I'm Rudolph David Harris Jr. from Eden Wall, Bronx. And the reason why I'm here today is that over the last three years, I went to the MTA Community Information Center to learn about the Second Avenue subway project at 1628 Second Avenue on the Upper East Side of Manhattan. And I started to look at the pictures about the history that is made. And now, for the present and in the future, the first phase for the Second Avenue subway will be done for me in December at the end of this year with three new subway stations starting now with the existing Q train. And New York City Transit has three more phases to go ahead for the new T train to come in along Second Avenue. And I'm so glad I'm learning more about it, and there's more for me to learn coming up later on this year. And I can hardly wait to take a ride on the Q train from 96th Street, Second Avenue, and travel throughout Manhattan right before it heads to Brooklyn. And with more years to come, when the new T train comes in, I'm going to take a ride on it, too. And that's why I'm, that's why New York City Transit is still working on it for the first phase to get done. And it'll start working, working on three more phases to go ahead. And that will be done by the time the year's approach. And I'm happy, I'm very happy about it because I'm going to look forward to the future.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Omar Vera.
Hold up, I just need to -- all right. Greetings and thank you, greetings and good afternoon, members of the MTA as well as audience members and New Yorkers in general. I'm honored to speak to everybody in this room about the proposed service regarding Phase 1 of the Second Avenue subway, which is due to begin by the end of this year, especially regarding restoration of W service, W train service on the Astoria and Broadway lines between Astoria, DeMar's Boulevard, and Whitehall Street, which I just came out of. I am here to express my full support for restoration of weekday W service as well as the restoration of weekday N train express service in Manhattan during the set hours, during the set hours weekdays, and the remodeling of Q train service from Astoria to the Upper East Side as the line's northern terminus. I believe that these service changes will benefit New Yorkers in the short and long runs and will better serve everyone who uses the vital New York City subway system, especially those who regularly use the already overcrowded Lexington Avenue 4, 5, and 6 lines. Restoring W train service would also benefit Astoria passengers who come to Lower Manhattan without having to switch the R trains. As many of us may remember, the W was eliminated as part of the 2010 service cuts along with the V as well as shorting the G train from Forest Hills to Court Square. Many other bus routes were affected by the service cuts. Since 2010, however, the MTA has reversed many of the service cuts, but not the, but there are only buses. This is our chance to reverse a subway service cut. And I would like to recommend that if the W gets restored, it should get restored in early September as opposed to November because, for two reasons. One, to ensure a smoother transition for the Q train when it actually gets moved to 96th Street from 57th Street. Another reason why I believe September's a better, like September 6th is a better date to launch W service is because it's a new school year. The new school year, according to the New York City Department of Education, is that begins on September 8th, Thursday, September 8th. And I believe that the new subway service should commence with the new school year. And so there you go. Keep in mind that when the service cuts occurred back in 2010, they took place around the end of the 2009-2010 school year. So it's only natural, new service comes with new school years. And one more recommendation. I would like to see if the W gets, does get restored, I know that seven train service is still, they still need work on like the Steinway tubes between Queens and Manhattan. So if seven train service gets suspended on those weekends for work, could the W be activated for service on weekends when there's no seven train between Manhattan and Queens in order to accommodate seven train riders? If that's possible, that would be great. Once again, I'm in full support for this plan, and we need the W train to come back. I miss it. I'm a subway fan. I've been since I was four. New Yorkers would appreciate it. Everybody would appreciate this. The city needs the W train. They need N train express service, and the Broadway line needs more local and express service. I yield back the balance of my time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Pedro Valdez Rivera, Virginia.
Good evening, wait. Good evening, MTA and President. My name is Pedro Valdez Rivera, Jr., and I am the member of the Alliance Alliance. The Alliance Alliance is a transit advocacy group dedicated to fight for better affordable fares and improved service for subways, buses, and commuter rail rides in New York City. I'm in full support of the return of the W train coming up in December 2016, and also looking forward for the Second Avenue subway coming up and for the stash of the Q train to 96th Street for Phase 1 by December 2016. And I definitely look forward to it. Couple of recommendations to piggyback what's on the previous comments there. One is, again, the W train needs to be standard to Bay Parkway in Brooklyn during rush hours. And before the service cuts in 2010, the M train at the time is brown, it goes along Lower Manhattan, go to Bay Parkway along the D train during rush hours, and captures a lot of riots, basically. And now because of a lot of development going on, a lot of residential development, a lot of commercial development going on along 4th Avenue line in Sunset Park, and also there's only one local train along 4th Avenue, which is the R train, which sometimes running every 10 minutes, even at best during rush hour, so it's unreliable. They need another train to get to where they're going, especially from Sunset Park at Besse Hurst, Bay Ridge, all the way to downtown Brooklyn and Lower Manhattan and Midtown Manhattan. Number one. Number two, why not consider, I know it's a stretch, why not consider the N train going express in a peak direction during rush hours on the Astoria line, the BNT Astoria line, and make sure the W train have the same service, frequency of service as the N train? There's a lot of residential development going on in Astoria. You have Astoria Cove, condominiums, residential development, tens of thousands of people coming to Queens, especially Western Queens. So subways, especially on the end of W train, becomes a big necessity. And conclusion, I definitely look forward to the Second Avenue subway, the return of W train, and all those recommendations I gave to you, and please, if riders are born in, if there's enough rolling stock, if there's enough operating revenue sources, then make it happen for current New Yorkers and future New Yorkers. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for just giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Peter Moses.
Hello, I'm uh, embracing my journey to cranky old man. I uh, yelled at a Parks Department employee about a month ago and now I'm at my first hearing. So uh, we'll see how this goes. Um, I'm looking at the proposal uh, for the W line and weekends and late nights, it says does not operate, use the N or the R. Um, if you've been to Astoria, you'll know that the R train is nowhere close to where the N and Q currently go. On the map you handed out, you cut the Steinway Station in half because it's so far out of the grasp, it doesn't really count for anything. Uh, Google Maps says Steinway to Astoria, DeMar's Boulevard is a thirty-two minute walk. Uh, to say that that is a good uh, alternative is not fair and accurate. I would say that um, whatever train replaces the Q, I don't care what it is, uh, have it run at night, late nights, and on the weekends. I work a second shift. Uh, the trains are packed at night. I wait twenty, you know, maybe twenty minutes and it's jammed in there. If the train lurches, uh, I've unintentionally made a new friend or assaulted someone because of how packed the trains are. Um, I would say, uh, whatever you do, the, the idea that just the N train uh, at nights is mistaken um, with the expectation that we'll be shutting down, or you guys will be shutting down uh, some of the stops in Astoria, Thirty-Ninth Avenue, Thirty-Sixth Avenue, uh, Broadway and Thirtieth Avenue for rehabilitation. It's only gonna add to the packness of the trains. I live at Astoria Boulevard. It's the second stop. If I go to work, you know, during rush hour, uh, I'm jammed in there at the second stop. Uh, if I come home at night, uh, I don't get a seat, which is fine. I'm young. It's okay. I'm just kinda lazy. Uh, but it shows that how many people are on these trains. And I hope you guys will take that into a recommendation on whatever you're proposing to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Andrea Harris. Ms. Harris in the room? Um, we'll now go to Mr. Frederick Wells.
Good evening, folks. I'm Frederick Wells. I'm also a member of the Riders Alliance, which is a grassroots, grassroots group for improvement transit. Okay. My concern here is not for the, for the W trains. I know it's coming back as that's an improvement of service on the Astoria line. And it's not for the Q train going up on Second Avenue. My concern is when it's the Second Avenue Subway is completed, is what will replace the M fifteen local and lim, uh, select bus service along First or Second Avenue. Once the Second Avenue Subway is completed, which is called the T line, you could pretty much say goodbye M fifteen local and M fifteen select bus service. The main reasons range from A, reliability issues on the M fifteen to B, routes duplicating the subway to C, other bus routes can be restructured to replace the length of the route along First Avenue, Second Avenue corridors. What will replace the M fifteen local and select bus service or a wide range of other buses may include select bus service being placed on other corridors which were formerly considered by, for bus rapid transit. Some suggested for restructure bus ser, services are as follows. One, the BX one and BX two extended from the Bronx to East Ninety-Sixth Street via First and Second Avenue, transforming all BX one trips to select bus service. Two, the BX fifteen local and limited restructured to service First and Second Avenue with a new terminal East Ninety-Sixth Street and Upper Avenue. That's instead of a standard of BX one or two. Third option is the BX thirty-two extended from the Bronx to East Ninety-Sixth Street via First and Second Avenue. That's instead of the BX one, two, or fifteen. Four is the Q sixty MTA Bus Company operated route north via First and Second Avenue to East Ninety-Sixth Street or south to First Avenue's, first, uh, to East Twenty-third Street. Five is the Q thirty-nine extended across the Queensborough Bridge in North via First Avenue, Second Avenue to East Ninety-Sixth Street, only if the Q sixty is six, Q sixty is extended Twenty-third. Six is the Q sixty-seven extended to Queensborough Bridge via South. Queensborough Bridge is south via First and Second to East Twenty-third, only if the six, Q sixty is extended north to Ninety-six. Seven is the B thirty-nine remumbered M thirty-nine extended north to First and Second Avenue to East Ninety-Sixth Street at all times. Eight is the M fifteen local only, truncane to run only between South Avenue and East Ninety-Sixth Street. And nine is the new M thirteen local and select bus service to run along the M fifteen road between East Ninety-Sixth Street and East House Street, shifting over the Bro, shifting over the Bowery corridor to the Manhattan Bridge to service New Terminal Barkings Center. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is George Calimnu. Sorry.
Good evening. How are you? Hope you guys had a wonderful day today. I have two proposals for the MTA and I hope you take them into consideration because my motto is common sense must prevail. I see no change in Q or N servers and the R should be made express. I'm most proposing that from the A line, from Ozone Park, that train gets changed to the K. At Atlantic Avenue changes, goes down the R line, local to Ninety-Sixth Street. This way we can relieve crowding on the A line. So if you ride the A line, it is very, very delayed. And you improve service on all trains in all boroughs, Brooklyn, Manhattan, and Queens. Number one. Number two, if necessary, if necessary, to bring the W back, which I think it's not necessary, because the Q should not be changed, have the W start from Brooklyn all the way to Ninety-Sixth Street at all times. As a member of the Department of Education, the Q train is vital because it's the only train that goes through the aquarium. And when you have little kids with you, you don't want to transfer at Coney Island or any other stations. So keep the Q the way it is and add the W if necessary to Ninety-Sixth Street. Or keep, I will first propose with the K train from Ozone Park to Atlantic Avenue, uh, then on the R line, make it local to Ninety-Sixth Street. And the R should be an express with the Q. This way it benefits everyone. And for the R, my colleagues here, the reason why the R is delayed, it shares its track with the M in Queens and its every other train. That's why there's a big delay on the R line. And if I may make one more comment, if possible, irrelevant. A few weeks ago, I was on the M line. It was rerouted on the R line. Every station, the conductor was saying, this is the M line on the R line. The M train is computerized. It's not like the R. It's computerized. We asked him to change his letter to R so he doesn't repeat it every single time because we know already. He was telling me that the control tower will, will get him in trouble if he did that. That is ridiculous. At five-thirty in the morning, that is ridiculous. Please consider that change as well. Thank you and please take my proposals into consideration. Have a wonderful evening and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Juan Castillo, please.
First of all, thank you for giving it a time to express my opinions about the two topics we had to talk about this month. At first, I'm very happy to find out that the, the W train line is coming back to service after a six-year layoff. The W was created in July twenty-second, two thousand and one, went to replace the B train in Brooklyn. Then on February twenty-second, two thousand and four, it was replaced by the D in Brooklyn when it ran weekdays only between Astoria, DeMar's Boulevard, Queens, and Whitehall Street, South Avenue, Manhattan, until the two, the June twenty-ten service cuts eliminated the subway line. The Q train was extended to Astoria, DeMar's Boulevard in the W train's place during the weekdays. Well, with the Second Avenue Subway stop about to open in a few months from now, the Q train will be rerouted over the Sixty-third Street Tunnel to the newly activated cross-platform subway stop at the Lexington Avenue, Sixty-third Street F train stop, travel under the new Second Avenue Subway tunnel up north to Ninety-Sixth Street. While we're getting the W back line and that's great, but I feel like we're missing something. Yeah, can, can we also try to bring back the, the V and the brown M lines? Because for, because for the past six years, many Southern Brooklyn residents relied on another train service to, to, to also help out the R train line along the Fourth Avenue line in Brooklyn. Yeah, let, let's reroute the M back to the Nassau Street line and bring back the V train. Uh, but with a twist. Just like how you extend the J train to Broad Street at all times, we should try to extend the brown M to Ninth Avenue, Brooklyn at all times with weekday rush hour service to and from Bay Parkway. Also, without the, the orange M, with the V train being returning, let's also create the, the Eighth Avenue Canarsie Line to make up the loss of the orange M line, which will replace the Liberty Rush Hour E train service by running express in Queens between Jamaica, West End, and Ninth Street and Queens Plaza. And we'll run local in Manhattan in Brooklyn along the E, Queens Plaza towards Fourth Street, one stop along the F to Broadway Lafayette, down the Christie Street Cut, we, we met, it goes through the James Z line to, up, all the way out to Broadway Junction. Then finally, six more stops along the L, the L line to Rockaway Parkway. Oh, also late, K, K train will run local in Queens during late nights and weekends. Also, we need to make certain subway lines to run at full platform length like the, the C, the G, and the, and the S Rockaway Park Shuttle out in, out in Queens. Let's see if we can make, make this work, um. Also, about the M five, I, I don't have enough time to speak about this, but let's make this quick, uh. Bring back the M six, the M one south of Eighth Street, along and along Park Avenue South. Also, create a new bus line that will follow the M one service along Park Avenue South and south of Eighth, Eighth Street. Short turn M five service at Houston Street. Split the M five into two different routes, one local and one limited, with the local short turning at Seventy-second and Broadway and the other, the limited to run the full route. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is James Nuro. Um, I have one speaker after Mr. Nuro. If anybody's in the room and has not yet spoken and would like to speak, I encourage you to go sign up outside.
Good afternoon. My name is James Nuro. Uh, currently I live out of the area in the state of Virginia, but I'm preparing to have a second career here in New York City. And chances are I'll be taking um, the train, the N train particularly, and possibly the Queens, uh, the Q train in Queen, uh, to Queens. So um, I'm excited for the Second Avenue Subway that's gonna be coming um, later on this year and uh, most of the changes. I have two items for consideration. Uh, first would be possibly extending the W train as a local into Brooklyn on Fourth Avenue to assist the R train, particularly during rush hours. And a second, the second uh, change would be um, right now they have the N train going express to Manhattan, which is a good thing. However, they have it going local after Forty-second Street and stopping at uh, I believe it's Forty-ninth Street. Um, I don't see a reason for that change. It looks like, right now there's already a bottleneck at the Thirty-fourth Street uh, station with the Q train and the N train, or I'm sorry, just the Q train switching over to the local truck and they have the N and the R, a lot of times waiting just to get into Thirty-fourth Street. Um, I believe the uh, viable solution would be have the N train just go express to Fifty-seventh and then go down to Fifty-ninth Street too. Um, this way it'll alleviate a bottlenecks. Uh, trains can stop in the station instead of waiting, you know, halfway between stations and such. I think it'll be a lot clearer and a lot easier for flow of traffic. That concludes my remarks. Thank you for considerations.
Thank you for your comments. Our next and last speaker for the moment is Trudy Mason.
Hi. Good evening. I'll read from what I have here. Good evening. I'm Trudy L. Mason, the Manhattan Borough President's Representative on the New York City Transit Riders Council. And as you know, the NCTRC is one of three New York State legislative mandated councils that make up the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee to the MTA, the PCA C. And I am speaking on the NYC TRC's behalf. I'm also speaking on my behalf as somebody who is so thrilled that the Second Avenue Subway is coming. I am a resident of the Upper East Side of Manhattan and I regularly use subways, buses throughout the city. The changes that are being discussed this evening are critically necessary to relieve pressure on the transit infrastructure on the Upper East Side, which is operating dangerously over capacity. And I should say when I'm talking, when we're talking about subways today, it took me forty-five minutes to get crosstown along Seventy-ninth Street because the headway between buses, there was a fire, but the headway between the buses was impossible. And of course, everything was overcrowded on buses. And the buses along Third Avenue and Lexington Avenue are, are subject for another hearing, but I will just add that also. So the Second Avenue Subway is going to be wonderful. Now I'll come back to what it says in here. Overcrowding the Lexington Avenue line has become a way of life. And when there are service disruptions, subway riders face intolerable conditions with limited transportation options. We welcome this opening of the first phase of the Second Avenue Subway as an initial step to give this area the transit infrastructure that it needs. I think you've already heard from Congresswoman Maloney's representative about how happy we are that there is finally funding so that Phase Two can start because that is also critical. And then hopefully there will soon be Phase Three and Phase Four and something that we have dreamed of for years and years and years will finally happen. And I go back to my days when I was sitting behind that table when I worked at the MTA and we first had the idea of doing the Second Avenue Subway. There are several questions about the service changes considered in this hearing that should be discussed publicly by New York City Transit officials. The frequency of service is one area that requires fuller explication. The NYC TRC recognizes that the New York City Transit operates subways in accord with policy headways that establish a minimum service frequency and periodically adjust service levels on ridership. The changes in the service plan will clearly lead to schedule adjustments, but we have not heard a definitive discussion by New York City Transit concerning the future frequency of Q line service and whether it will differ from headways operated. I have one more paragraph to go because I made my ad lib. So please, I hope you'll allow me to do that. Um, the changes in the service plan, uh, where was I? But we have not heard a definitive discussion by NYC Transit concerning the future frequency of Q line service and whether it will differ from headways operated under current schedules. Since the proposed plan also includes changes on other services on the Broadway line, New York City Transit should also publicly discuss any changes to headways of other Broadway line trains as well as any potential service impacts on other lines as a result of the reconfiguration of the service. The new service resulting from the opening of the Second Avenue Subway is a significant addition to the subway system. Further, it, it is only the beginning of an expansion that will provide much more capacity and options for riders in the future. The TRC can, encourages the MTA to move forward diligently with the full development of the Second Avenue Subway. We are pleased to see the additional service that will result from this first phase of this project and we believe riders should hear more about these benefits. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with the NYC TRC's comments on these service changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, we've gotten another one, David Paul Gerber.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, I really, very much can't believe it that we're speaking on what is the threshold of a, a vision as a vision nineteen twenty-nine called the Second Avenue Subway. Uh, I think it's, the MTA has done a mild of a job by trying to get Phase One and I'm sure that the money would be fully extended for Phase Two. Now, my only concern about this service plan is the W train. The W train ends at Whitehall Street, which does create a minor bottleneck. As one who used to live in Brooklyn, when the R train comes in and has to wait for the W leave, sometimes the W gets stuck and the R train can get delayed. Um, I believe that they should take in consideration, I know it's very difficult, the scheduling possibility whereby the W would have as minimal interference when entering and leaving Whitehall Street at the important scheduled arrival at the terminal and departure at the terminal here. Uh, the service frequency would be most ideal. The service plan is, is really the best way to go. There's no other further comment about it. I do wish the MTA would take a more proactive approach in information itself. That's much as I'd say. I had a sheet there, but I left a sheet behind. I might need to come back and have the sheet. But I also want to bring the attention that if they can do as well the Second Avenue Subway in opening it and try and get it by December, it should be done without any delays. But if they rush it, I'd be more unhappy if they delay for a month or two or even three months, rather than opening it up and find out that the escalator at 96th Street could be flooded and they have to shut it down. That said, I also want to bring the attention here that on this weekend, there'll be several lines here, that they have wrong announcements. The announcements that they would say that the A train diverted on the F line, the D train diverted on the A line, the E train is running on the F line. But if you guys really want to ride the subway, you should listen to these announcements. As I spoke to Mr. Albert about a few years ago, several years ago about, it's still going on. And I will be out there sometime this Saturday or Sunday and come back with the comments of the M5 bus route at the hearing two weeks in row. Again, but other than that, congratulations on the MTA. I hope it opens. I hope everything goes smoothly, and I'm looking forward to being on the first Q train going into 96th Street.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm glad that I came out, you know, I had, I was in Manhattan, Fourth Sixth Street Westside, I was on the racing. And I'm glad that you're making progress. But what I don't understand about the whole thing, I had read an article in around 1999 about the Second Avenue Subway was supposed to be completed a long time ago, even I was in high school. They said it was supposed to be completed a long time ago, but I listened, I listened to news, they say crisis after crisis. Now, this is the old project. Now, you say the first part has been completed. Now, they said, I go, this was be going 125th Street. Now, they want to, I go, ease the crowding on the, on the 4, 5, and 6 lines. You know, it's going to do some effect, but not all the way. But the whole thing is that, I'm concerned about what time they're going to go further to 125th Street. And after that, I got the information passed, this subway is supposed to go down to Lower Manhattan. It's supposed to be going up 125th Street, and after that, they're going to have a new line to go down to Lower Manhattan, Lower Manhattan, to Hannibal Square. So what time, the whole party is going to be completed? Because we need it. Because this, right now, this line is crowded. You want to connect the Long Island Railroad to Grand Central from Queens, so, you know, but you got to make more progress. But the whole thing, this should have been done a long time ago. That's why I'm concerned so, like, I know, like, I had received that it wasn't delayed on this part because you want to repair these stations. But like, what time would this train be extended to 125th Street? That's the whole thing, and, and like, what time the whole party is going to be completed? Because this is a very important job. It's very important, and all right, we need a new subway line. And I was, I was in the, I looked at the trains, the trains, like, literally to say, we have a new East Side train line working right now. They're working on connecting right now, they're working on a new line, but everything's been tore down. But the whole thing, what time this line is going to be completed? 225th Street? That's what I'm concerned about right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. At this point, at 5:55, we have no further speakers. We're going to recess the hearing and we'll come back when we have some people to speak. Since we recessed, we've gotten one more speaker, so I'd now like to call Norman Miller up to the podium.
Yes. Yes, good evening, members of the MTA Board. My name is Norman, and I live in Jamaica, Queens, and I, and I ride the Queens Line every day. And first off, on the R, on the W line, I commend you guys for restoring back the W line because it has been six long years, six years. The Broadway line has gotten sluggish, has gotten sluggish ever since the N ran north of Canal, and the Q train had to switch tracks after 34th Street. So in my opinion, it has to stop, and bringing back the W train was a wise choice. And second of all, regarding about the R train and its fleet, I know it consists of majority of R46, and it uses R160s sometimes, like, when the R runs on the F line, to one, to and from 179th Street in Hillside, Queens, when it service changes. And recently, two weeks ago, went around the Sixth Avenue line on the, on the B, D, F, and the deceased V line. I would like to, well, I wouldn't say I. Well, the city would like to see more R160s for that R line because with the R46s on that line, it's gotten sluggish and unreliable, especially on the Fourth Avenue line. And I know this may be far-fetched, but I don't know if you guys were considering to bring back the Nassau M, because I know people prefer more of the orange M than the former brown M. But if you're, but if you're not really considering bringing the M back, maybe we could think of some line that could actually serve Fourth Avenue and serve the West End line where the, where the M line, where the former brown M line used to be. And I know it's not a far-fetched about the G line, right? Mind if I talk about the G line real quick? Um, yes. I was thinking, here's my recommendation. I was thinking, after all the construction work is done, CBTC on that line has been completely installed. Oh, time's up?
Yeah, 30 seconds more.
Okay, 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 real quick. I was thinking, you know the short, eight-car R160M line, M that runs the M? Maybe we should move that to the G line, and once CBT is installed, you could think about considering restoring the G line back to 471st Avenue. I don't know, I don't know how you guys are going to work it out, but it's just my recommendation. And that's all I have to say, and that's all I have to say at this time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments and your patience, Mr. Miller. Again, if anybody is in the room who has not spoken and would like to speak, I encourage you to go sign up outside. That not being the case, we are in recess again. One more speaker has registered, so we're going to ask Mr. Ronald Weintraub to come up to the podium, please.
Good afternoon, Lois. Good afternoon, Judith. I think it's great to see, I'm speaking in behalf of all disabled about the 96th Street line, about the new line. I agree, but as you know, there's been some F train problems. We don't know how long you, how long this, how much longer we can see the new service begin. You do with the W train, so I'd like to know when that's all going to start, resume service on the line. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. One of the people in the back could answer your questions. Okay, we have another speaker, Abba Levy.
Hi, I'm not, I know I'm young, but I had a proposal of my own, similar to this, it has to do with the train service on the Broadway lines. For the proposal of the idea of the Second Avenue Subway, I think it's a great idea in the East Side because the 5 and the 4 and the 6 trains are really lacking service. But my opinion is, instead of having the N train run express and the W local, the W should operate via express from the stop of Canal Street to the stop of 57th Street now, and then go express in peak direction in Queens. And I'll explain why. And the N local. Because right now, the N runs local and it's operating very well, and passengers, especially senior citizens who walk from Canal Street up and down, who want to transfer, it's very difficult. But it would be a lot easier instead, for some passengers, they don't need South Ferry to go from Brooklyn, and it's a lot easier just to take one train, or if possible, less. It would be a lot easier for people just to take one train like the N and run, operate local in Manhattan, and then if they want the Q train, because Atlantic Avenue Barclay Center is a very big stop where they usually get on. And the W would operate express in Queens in peak direction, because there is a one express track in the center, which would allow passengers to connect from the N train to the W, and it would operate express. Now, if that is not seen as a good idea, maybe have the N train run express and keep it in Manhattan as well, operating express as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Nobody else rating to be heard, we're on recess again. Good evening. It now being 7 o'clock, I am adjourning this hearing. Thank you all for coming.